Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 1st regular meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes, Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord.
Here.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Gosin is excused. Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Potashkov is excused. Commissioner Stone.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, under God, indivisible, and in God. Thank you very much. As everyone can see, this is a virtual meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And just to reiterate, these meetings are considered legal now in the state of Michigan under Gretchen Whitmer's executive order of back in March. So that any action taken this evening is actually official. That would not normally be the case. Planning commissions, like all public bodies, have to be held in person. But for the interim anyway, we'll continue to meet virtually. And along with that executive order, we're able to continue to move projects forward. At this point, number three on the agenda is public comment. We don't have a real audience, but Sienna, I'd ask if you have any communication from anyone from the public, either by phone or through community television?
We do not.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll call that again at the end of the meeting in case anyone checks in with us. Number four is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st, 2020. I'd ask the commissioners, if you've had the opportunity to review the minutes, any deletions or additions? And if not, does someone have a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved. We have support.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, so we can get
I think I hear you. Dixon?
Yes.
Clark Martin? Yes. Bavacqua?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
King?
Well, yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to introduce our newest planning commissioner, Sarah King. Sarah has joined us tonight. I've seen her here a couple of times online. And Sarah, if you could, take a couple of minutes and introduce yourself to us. Tell us a little bit about your background and how long you've been around the city and all those sorts of things.
Thank you. So I grew up as a resident of Rochester Hills, so very familiar with the downtown community. My grandpa lived on Main Street when I was growing up. So I've been here pretty much all my life. Went to Michigan State and I lived in Chicago for seven years. But my husband and I, he's also Rochester Hills resident or native. We decided to move back to the state of Michigan and raise our family here. So we've been back since 2013. And when we moved back, we bought a house in downtown. So we just love the community. We love being close to the park, being able to walk downtown, enjoy everything that the city has to offer. Even during this time, we did make it to the farmer's market on Saturday. So we've just been in the community for a very long time and I wanted to get more involved. On the work side, I work in banking and I've done some commercial real estate projects in the past. So I've just been kind of interested in development and that's kind of how I found my way here.
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Sarah?
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome, welcome.
Welcome aboard. Sarah, when you have an opportunity, give me a call. And I think if we spend a little bit of time together, I can get you up to speed on things, what it's like to be a planning commissioner, expectations, all those sorts of things. And that may help speed you along in getting used to the process.
Great, I look forward to it. Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, item number six, this is consideration of a site plan to change existing office space into residential apartments to be located at 134 West University Drive. Madam Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will now share my screen so that everyone can see the site plan as I am speaking about it.
Vida, a little bit louder.
Yes, I was just sharing my screen. Can everybody see the site plan?
Yep, now we can.
Okay. At the city's request, we reviewed a proposal from Robert Zentner of Yamazaki Inc. to convert existing office space into residential apartments. Building is located on the north side of West University, west of Main Street intersection, and is Zoned CBD, which is the central business district. The site is occupied, as you can see, by a T-shirt building. The first floor with street rampage over here on West University is occupied by a restaurant and medical offices, which are proposed to be retained as is. However, the second story offices and the basement will be converted to one and two-bedroom apartments. What we have done at this time is a preliminary review and just a few of the comments on this project, and the planning commission can ask whatever questions they have and then move this project on to the next step. Now, professional administrative offices are permitted by right in the central business district. Upper story apartments are permitted as a special exception use by the zoning ordinance and is subject to specific provisions from Section 2111 of the zoning ordinance. The site has two access drives of West University. If you'll see over here, this is labeled, the east side is labeled as entrance and the west side is labeled as exit. While people who are familiar with the site might know this is the circulation pattern, I think it'll help if signage is installed saying that this is entrance only, do not enter. Similarly, post signage here, exit only. You know, entrance, do not exit from this site. So clear signage needs to be posted, some form of code signage so people don't come down the wrong way because this aisle is only 14 feet wide. The plan proposes new sidewalks with ramps and railings on the north side of the building to facilitate barrier-free access over here. And the sidewalk width is anywhere from four feet to four feet eleven and a half inches. Public sidewalks are required to be a minimum five feet wide. However, if under ADA requirements, this is an existing building, if it meets ADA requirements and the building official is satisfied with the width of the sidewalk provided, we would find that acceptable. The site plan includes a total of 115 parking spaces that you can see. And that parking calculation is based on all of the existing uses and the proposed apartments, depending upon how many bedroom units that they have. The plan includes a total of 124 spaces. Now, the spaces that you see on this side and this side are 18 feet wide. Now, this drive aisle is 14 feet wide. Although it is one-way, the minimum required width of a one-way drive aisle is 15 feet. Similarly, the parking spaces here are 90 degrees. The aisle width is 20 feet. Minimum required aisle width is 20. But this is an existing non-conformity. The applicant is not altering it in any way. Trying to alter and achieve compliance with ordinance will result in loss of required parking spaces, which the ordinance does not advocate for. So as long as the applicant is not aggravating an existing non-conforming situation, we are fine with it remaining as currently is proposed. We just need confirmation that the restaurant that is interior does not have a bar area to serve patrons because the parking calculations are based on liquor being served only at the tables. And it's different if it's got a bar also. So just confirmation is required. Comment six on my page was regarding the dumpster over here. The dumpster is located on the north end of the site and is shared between multiple sites, all of which are owned by Dr. Atala. After I wrote this letter, I did get a copy of the shared dumpster agreement, so that is already taken care of. Now, the proposed architectural changes include extensive interior renovations and also significant facade changes. I'd like to share, I'd like to share what facade renovations are. Are you able to see?
Yes.
Yes.
So the applicant is proposing significant facade renovations, which includes addition of decorative fieldstone at the main entrance of West University, this area, main entrance, addition of doors for the second-story apartments, addition of these decorative gables that are shown over here, addition of decorative fieldstone at the base of all the pillars that are in front over here. So essentially, the whole building is being given a boost. It is still staying true to its original style of architecture, but it's being enhanced. If you look at the other side of the building, I will share another image so that you can see the other side of the building. So this is the other side where they have window wells for the lower-level apartment. The applicant has submitted color rendering of the proposed building, as you can see, and the style is true to what the building originally looked at. Lot of the changes that are being proposed are to ensure that they meet building code requirements and make the building ADA accessible. At this time, no information regarding landscaping has been submitted, as in no formal landscape plan has been submitted. The site plan does include, if you look at the site plan, I'll go back to the site plan. It does mention that there are some grassy areas, there is going to be some landscaping, but this does not meet the requirement of the ordinance per se. What we would like to see is a landscape plan showing all existing and proposed landscaping, including a table that shows plant species, number, size at the time of planting, and if it's existing. And I'm assuming there are trees on these islands, if so, they should be shown as existing landscaping because this needs to be inconvened. Information regarding onsite lighting needs to be provided. If there are any exterior fixtures, you need to see actual details and the shielding. And also clarification, if any kind of signage is going to be installed along any of the facades in order to verify if it meets the signage requirements for the building. Please step on our review of the project. It's our understanding that the demolition work on the interior, upper story and the basement has already been completed and the applicant did submit construction documents for building permit and review. However, we have put that on hold until they can go formally through the site plan review process. Subject to the information being submitted that I've asked for, which is not much in detail, just a landscape plan and some additional clarifications, we believe the project is ready to be set forth for a special exception and a public hearing at your next available. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the planner?
Vida, you broke up. Did you say something about the dumpsters? You received something about the dumpsters?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Atala did provide me with a copy of a shared dumpster agreement that is already in place.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Vida, I'm just asking this for clarification. This is all zoned office right now, building and parking?
Central business district, CBD. It's all zoned CBD.
But it's all office use?
Yes, it has got office use, restaurant use, and now they are putting in apartments. Currently, it's mostly offices.
To include the residential, does it take a rezoning or the special projects consideration? It can be done under special projects?
It can be done. The ordinance allows for apartments as a special exception, not a special project. This is not a special project. It is a special exception similar to a special land use.
And that would be both basement and second floor would be covered under that?
The ordinance specifically refers to it as upper story apartments. And the reason for such a reference is to make sure that the street level is occupied by businesses or offices that have a pedestrian connection. There's no specific reference to the underground or the basement level units. So we would assume, I think it would be a reasonable interpretation to say that main floor, that the spacing, the street was always intended for businesses and offices that have a pedestrian connection. When you say upper story apartments, it can be extended to occupy water subbasement.
So we would possibly need an opinion from the attorney that basement apartments fit into that definition?
I think that would be a great idea, to have the documentation straight for the city attorney to put forth a written opinion so that we will be consistent in applying the same standard in the future.
Okay. So I know the demo, et cetera, that's being done, is being done under a building permit. What do we need, what do we need a site plan approval for here?
Because there are exterior facade changes to the building.
All the facade changes and
Exactly.
the exposing the basement walls, et cetera, et cetera?
Also, the fact that they are putting in upper story apartments. While a principal permitted use under certain circumstances can be administratively approved, a special exception use does require planning permission.
Okay. So we'd be approving, we'd be, when they return, if we get to that point, we would be asked to approve the site plan and special exception?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions about that?
Vida, regarding landscaping, did you say that they are going to supply a landscape plan?
Yes, that is one of the requirements. I would like to see a landscape plan with a plant list and method of irrigation and all the details that are typically required on a landscape.
Or is it currently irrigated or will that be an addition?
I am hoping the applicant will clarify that. Mr. Zentner is on the Zoom call, so I'm sure when he speaks up, he will clarify whether it's there or not. And I would expect irrigation system to be installed because hand watering is not a very viable method of preserving landscaping, especially on this case.
Agreed, thank you.
Okay. All right, Dr. Atala and your representatives, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am. And Mr. Zentner, Principal from Yamazaki, will be starting with you, Chairman, then I will go ahead and do a little presentation.
Okay, the floor is yours. Just so everyone knows, this is a discussion this evening. There's nothing in front of us for decision. This is really to present it to us for the first time and get the reaction from the commissioners and any members of the public who are watching, who might want to give us some input. Excuse me, Doctor, floor is yours.
Well, let me start. My name is Robert Zentner. I'm a principal of Yamazaki Architects. Obviously, I happen to be a Rochester Hills resident for 20 years, fellow neighbor, anyway. And Dr. Atala and I have been involved in other projects in the past, so we have a little bit of a track record together. And it's a great opportunity, I think, in this facility to introduce housing, obviously very close proximity in a pedestrian sense to downtown. And so, and also enhance the exterior of the facility to bring it more into the Pancreek Village concept that the doctor's developed. And we can talk a little bit more about that, but we're essentially, the exterior program is really a result of what we're changing internally to the building. We're adding 27 units of apartment housing, about 60% of which are two-bedroom, ideal for younger couples or roommates, both bedrooms being unsweet. And then the remaining 20%, one-bedroom and 20% studio units.
And these are all rental units, no condominium sales?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So the improvements to the building are one, to affect the occupancy of the lower levels who are creating area wells to bring light into those lower-level units and also enhance the, and try to get it to integrate or knit together a little bit better with the overall campus feel that the doctor's anticipating for his other buildings in this area. So the landscape plan is something that will be finalized and brought
Robert, you're breaking up. If you could readjust there a little bit.
Right, maybe I'll turn the camera off. Maybe it's a man with issues. Sorry. So we'd like to address these, the larger picture issues of the use and the area wells and the code issues with the building departments. And then we'd like to come back and follow on with a detailed landscape plan. The idea being that where most of landscaping is being replaced in a like fashion or enhanced where we can, where we can do that. But the purpose is to allow the light wells to bring daylight into the basement and then to kind of bring back and restore the landscape to where it currently, the same quality level it currently is. In terms of the landscape irrigation, we don't have landscape irrigation currently, do we, Doctor, on the pad around the building?
We used to, but it was useless really because really essentially, all those plants have been there for years, perennials, and they're growing beautifully on their own. And we're going to add perennials on low. We don't use any annuals at all that would require a sprinkler system. We had nothing but trouble with the sprinkler system because of the problem with the water in Rochester. And we have not used it since I've owned this building for over 35 years.
Okay. So and then in terms of lighting, again, the lighting, I think, recently was upgraded in the parking area to be LED. And the building has five wall pack units on it that was at this time thought to be replacement with a better shielding LED unit similar to what was used in the parking lot. Would at least be uniform from a color standpoint and then the fixture itself would also be consistent with what's on in the parking lot currently. In terms of the entry, the entries are actually, because of the site plan, I apologize, Vida, the site plan's rotated 90 degrees, so north is the left. So the actually, the barrier-free entrances are at the midpoint on the east and the west, where the ramps are coming into the middle of the building. So because of the grade change on the site, the north entrance doesn't allow barrier-free. And when the other site plan was approved, the barrier-free spaces were on the west side there, and then there's a ramp that continues on to the intersection between the two, the north building and the south building. Actually, there are two wings that are connected there with an entrance and a stair, and there's an elevator close by as well. So just I wanted to clarify that, to make sure everyone, no one was confused by that. Actually, I'd like to maybe just turn it over to the doctor to talk a little bit more about his vision for the property, and I'll be available to answer any questions, anyone we have.
Okay, thanks, Robert. Good evening, Dr. Atala, 6th and Main. Chairman McGee, Vice Chair Lord, Mayor Bixson, Mayor Protem Bavacqua, member commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen, we are really very excited to be here tonight, despite the fact that it's a virtual meeting, but still, it's a good meeting. As stated by Robert Zentner, Principal at Yamazaki Architect, we are requesting, and I thought this will happen tonight so we can start construction, but we'll talk about that, we are requesting approval for special exception to replace the third-level office space at the 134 West University Drive to residential apartments. And I'm sure you're all very well aware that the office space has been very poor lately. People are requiring less and less space while we need in town to have some more living crowd to enjoy what we have. We're also asking the planning commission to approve the renovations essentially of the facades, as we were requested by the city administration, as well as we need to be there because the safety egress from the lower level. So these two main changes, I understand, precipitated for us to come in here. I was told for a long time that you don't need to go in front of the planning commission, but with these two changes, we were definitely requested to show up and make our presentation as we are doing tonight. The 27 apartments are detailed in our plans, and they'll be called the 134 University Lofts. They represent really another step in the growth of the Pancreek Village, as if you recall, I presented it to you on October 1st, 2018. Today, we just, I just learned reviewing my emails before the meeting, that Mr. McClure, building official of the city of Rochester, has approved the building plans after a lot of revisions and agreements, particularly as far as sprinkler systems. The 134 University Lofts are obviously going to be new at the Pancreek Village. However, I would like to take only a couple of seconds to tell you about the history of this building. This building, I don't know if you know that, was used as a hospital for veterans of World War II. Later on, it became the building for the Rochester Community House. And then when Crettonton Hospital came to town, it became the doctor's building. Well, Crettonton now has their own hospital for, their own building for years, and all the doctors that were in the building either expired or retired. So we have to do something because, as I stated earlier, the office space is just not, we've been having a lot of vacancy there. And as far as I'm concerned, we even moved the Rochester Women's Center from that building to 543 Main. So the reason we did this is to offer one-to-two-bedroom suites that really provide exceptional convenient access to onsite quality restaurants. As you know, we've enjoyed having Silver Spoon, Cruzeum, Pancreek Tavern will be opening very soon, O'Shea's is still around, and Recipes was doing very well till we have what we have right now. Onsite also, we have very advanced medical care and a teaching program for cardiologists from all across the globe, and that is at the Rochester Medical Center. We also have wonderful walkability. The city park is right next to us. The trail, the Pancreek Trail, is right there. We have several gyms, the shops throughout downtown, as well as the library and the post office. All this luxurious living will be provided at affordable prices, right in the heart of downtown Rochester. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
The rendering that we're looking at right now, Doctor, is that as-is or is that the proposed?
Well, I don't know if you recall, Chairman, the, what we showed you, what I showed you in the concept was going to be a three-story building.
Yes.
And we were frightened because we didn't know the structure of the building. Now that we did the demolition and we see it's solid, it's cinder block, we should have gone three stories, but it was too expensive. So we just stayed at two stories and we're going to use the first level to be also residential. So really, instead of building more or higher, we're going to use what we got, and we'll have Level One, Level Two Commercial, which we have a lot of tenants there, including Ascension Capital, the Cruz and Muir Headquarters Offices, and the third level will be residential, and that's why we're here asking for that exception.
When was this building built?
Actually, nobody knows. It's a secret. When the city of Rochester had floods, they lost all the plants. So I went through all history to find the year, and I, you know, I could tell you at least a good 70, 80 years, but precisely, I do not know the date.
So maybe in the 40s or 50s?
Well, it has to be before World War II. I mean, since it was a veterans' hospital.
Very good, very good. Commissioners, questions for Dr. Atala and Robert the Architect?
Will you show the other elevation, please? Because are those daylight windows? Are they complete daylight windows or how big are the windows?
They're complete, yeah, they're complete daylight windows. They comply with egress They're complete, yeah, they're complete daylight windows. They comply with egress requirements. Out of the lower level, which means they have to extend down to forty-two inches above the floor. And so there's a area well unit that's actually being installed. Uh, in the landscaping area between the building and the cars.
So these are gonna be fire exits from each unit?
Yes, correct.
How about on the front building? Is that the same way?
Um, that one's a little more difficult. We have actually on the. On the frontage, uh, on the West University, there's actually a structured area well there between. Uh, the building, uh, basement area and the colonnade along with part of this building here. So you can see there's new. Fencing that's applied there. So there's actually a well that's six and a half feet down, which will be landscaped there down low. And then the other landscaping that's out front because there's quite a big margin between the property line actually and the building. That occupied building, there's a porch and then there's a landscape bed and then the building pops out further as you had westbound. And that, um. And by the time you get down to Ascension, there is no more area well. So it's, it's varied along this edge and it's structured. In a different way, kind of like you would see in more urban areas where the sidewalk, there's a thin. Level of landscaping and then there's an area well for egress purposes there.
No, uh, exits from the apartments actually into these wells, though.
Only emergency exit.
Emergency.
Into the wells, right.
And then in terms of exit at the west end, I assume you're dealing with this with the fire chief, but. Uh, adequate exiting is provided for those basement units as well.
Right, so that, that fortunately, that, um, gap between the two buildings there was wider than what the, the fire. Uh, chief needed and so he allowed us to, um. Establish a little bit of green on the west side to be able to put those, uh, daylight units in there as we have on the north part of the building. So if you look back at the west side, we're introducing a green belt with the. Light wells and on that north side of the west, similarly along that extra wide bit of sidewalk there.
Doctor, do you own that small, I guess it's an apothecary or pharmacy shop to the east of your building?
No, uh, actually, I, I do not. I never planned on it. I probably should have, but I was afraid from the gas station essentially, so.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. That's currently occupied or used?
I think there is, uh, a candle shop in there right now.
Very good.
Uh, woman's day show and beauty supply store. It's a husband and wife woman from Birmingham.
Okay, do they own, they own the building?
Yep, and the parking lot.
Okay, very good, thank you. Other questions?
Dennis, I have a question, actually, uh, maybe for Vidya. Can you help me understand, explain the, the parking here? I think I saw in the report that there's. Parking, but I, I know there's kind of several buildings that. Are in the area, kind of comprise this campus here. Is it, is there shared parking going on or how does, how is the parking coming together here?
Yes, I believe I will, I defer to Doc to explain that since he owns a lot of these parcels, all of them are part of this larger vision for. Creating something for Pink Creek Village. So some of this parking is shared. So Doc, would you kindly explain that?
Uh, well, uh, at five four three main, which is the building on Main Street. Uh, we do have shared parking with the Pent Creek Tavern. We have twenty-seven, if I recall, shared parking spaces, but on one thirty-four. Uh, it is not shared legally, but as I remind everybody of two things. Number one, these parking lots have been shared for years. I've owned these buildings for many years. And the whole city folks, whenever they come to the park or whenever there is festivities in town. They use our parking lot. They all think it's the public parking lot and everybody is there. That's one. Two, I refer you to, uh, and Vidya, you might want to help me with that. McKenna. Did for the Downtown Development Authority as I was. Uh, part of that institution and the chairman of the Site Development Committee. Uh, made a study on parking regarding all Rochester. And if I recall the numbers, the whole city of Rochester. Had about fourteen hundred eighty parking spaces total between public and private. In here, on those lots between the Pine Building, the University Building. The main building and the underground parking, we have four hundred eighty out of those. So essentially on my parking lots, we do have just about a third of what the city of Rochester has. So that's where we start. But to answer your questions, this is one thirty-four legally. Right now it has more parking that it needs.
I, yeah, I saw in the, in Vidya's report, it commented that there's a hundred and fifteen parking stalls required. And a hundred and twenty-four provided. I just wasn't sure where the one fifteen. Was coming from, if, if that's a compilation of all these buildings?
No, one hundred and fifteen is the requirement in the ordinance based on. The restaurant, the administrative offices, medical offices and the proposed apartments. So based on the zoning ordinance application, they are required to have hundred and fifteen. And they have hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, so it really depends on that drawing where those spaces are, Vidya.
So you have spaces over here, you have sixteen here, eleven here, two, two. Have another nine here, you have another five here. And you have another ten here, thirteen, eleven, thirteen, 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 thirteen. Or all what you see over here includes the parking for.
So the ones at the upper left are not included or the lower right are not included?
All these, all these are part, no, this one.
How about to the west of those though? And then on the, uh, on the east side, are, is that included where your arrow is now?
Yeah, no, I don't believe that is included either. It is just what comes within the parking boundary.
Okay, I got it.
So Chairman, these, uh, the one on the right side belonged to five four three main and the one on the west belonged to five three zero pine.
Robert, as you know, uh, you have the burden of, uh, showing that to us and Vidya then has the burden of convincing us that. You know, when the site plan comes through, all of the required parking is there and it appears that it is, but. That's gonna be asked and that's why Eric asked that question.
Sure, and the restaurant doesn't have a bar area. It is, as you said, Vidya, the. From the menu only a table service.
I, I would like to clarify that the site is in the central business district. Technically encourage so public parking garages for central business district. Many of our CBD businesses don't have any parking at all. This is probably one of the few sites that actually meets all of its parking requirements. And that is the reason why we don't want them to lose anything that is already present.
Any grandfathering in here? From main business district?
You broke up, Mr. McGee, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, are, are there any grandfathered spaces attributed to this site? Because it's in the central business district.
Uh, I don't know that the term grandfathering applies over here. This is an existing building. It's got its required parking, so the parking stays with it. The ordinance, if they were to build something new, the ordinance would not require the extra parking. But the ordinance does say that if you have parking that meets the needs of the building, you're not going to take it off and go under it. At this point of time, they are meeting the requirements and the existing circulation pattern has remained for as long as this building has remained. So we are advocating no change.
Nick, when the, uh, parking decks were proposed and approved. Sites in the central business district were given credit essentially for parking that. That they did not have to replace. I just wondered if this site benefited from that.
No, it did not. We had the exempt zone was from alley through Main Street to the other alley. They're the ones that needed no parking, but everybody else. We, you're right, we grandfathered them, but this one had its own, so it didn't fall under that category.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Just a couple of follow-ups to that if I could. It, has there been any conversation? I guess this is Dr. Atala. Was there any conversation about, um. Uh, dedicating certain spaces or either the restaurant use or, or the, um, the apartments? Or is it just gonna be first come, first served?
First come, first served. We don't dedicate or give anybody, uh, a space. They ask all the time, of course. When they command, but we do not. It's, uh, it's like, uh. We go by the code, so this is what we need and first come, first. I mean, actually here again, I refer to the. Study by McKenna, uh, four, five years ago, our, our, the rate of use. Throughout the weekend, throughout the weeks, different hours of the day and night. Our lots are used less than three percent of the time. So we have excess lots and that's why people keep to, keep using our parking lots.
Any other questions?
This is. Go ahead, Eric, if you have another.
No, go ahead, go ahead, you're good.
I just, this is Sarah. I have, um, two questions. One is it relates to the parking, um, for the businesses. Such as Recipes and, and the others that are in there. If they're parking in the rear, how do people enter those businesses? Do they need to walk down the entrances where people, where cars would be driving?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Okay, no problem. As you can see, there is an entrance on the east side of the building. This is where people. Come in and park mostly for Recipes.
Vidya, can you put the arrow on that entrance?
Sure, here you go.
Uh, yes, but how do they enter the, the building itself?
Through, they just go through and they park. And also they use sometimes on the weekend particularly, they use these spaces here.
Yeah.
So they really have.
There's an entry at the entrance between the north wing and the south wing.
In the.
There is an entry right there that goes into the back of the restaurant. Most people use that and they use the angled parking there. Cause that's closest to the restaurant.
Thank you. And then my other.
Uh, go, go ahead, Sarah.
I just had one other question and this is regarding the inside. Um, cause you talked about having sixty percent of two-bedroom apartments that would appeal to families, potentially young couples. Do the apartments have bathtubs?
Yeah, well, we actually, in the two-bedroom units, if, uh, one of the bathrooms has a bathtub. And the other is a shower. Yep. Yeah, so if you look at.
I'm rotating.
Go down, zoom to the left-hand side.
Zoom in here?
Yeah, great, you know, right in the middle there on the, on the south side, there's a shower on, on the left-hand side and a tub on the other.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
That's a little, it's a construction drawing. I apologize for that. A little confusing.
Sarah, any other?
I have a couple, well, one sort of clarification and a question. Maybe for Vidya to clarify, uh, Dr. Atala mentioned that. He felt like the only reason that they were coming to planning commission or were told they had to come to planning commission initially was for facade renovation. But everyone is aware that, that they also need a special exception from planning commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Doc, you, you, you mentioned that you only needed it for facade, but. Then you did say that you were looking for special exceptions, so.
No, I said that, I said that, excuse me to interrupt you. I said that we are here. To make sure that we get special exception for the third floor. That was in my note.
Okay, okay. It was something you said earlier. I just wanted to make sure that.
Absolutely.
Same page.
And talking about that, uh, don't mean to interrupt you. I was under the impression really that we might get that tonight, so we can start building. Uh, if we're gonna wait another six weeks, that's six weeks of not building. The building. Is approved by the, the Mr. McClure. So I don't know where we stand on that.
It's not noticed tonight, so we are absolutely not able to make any sort of a decision. Nick and, uh, Siana, when's the next time this can be, uh, on a, on an agenda?
Well, this is actually, you guys are supposed to vote to move this to a public hearing, actually. The public hearing will be in July. The next meeting is in July, July sixth.
Okay, so roughly one month.
Yep.
Okay. And that requires, uh, all the public notice, all the property owners around it, et cetera, et cetera, publishing the paper, all those sorts of things, Doctor, the, the usual that we have to go through.
I understand.
So, um, Robert, as you know, is, um, if you're ready to roll and, uh. You know, you and Vidya have been communicating between now and, and July, this thing should move pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think we can provide the additional information that Vidya's requesting and, uh. And, uh, be ready to go.
Okay.
At that time.
Doctor, very creative idea. As far as I'm concerned, I'm expressing my own opinion, but I, I mean, I think it's. Just a fantastic reuse of space and such a key spot downtown. So I'm. I'm glad you, you and your advisors thought of this. I think it's terrific.
Thank you, Chairman, and let me, uh, just, if you don't mind giving me your opinion on that. The city administration had asked me to sign a letter written by the city attorney. Where essentially I give all my rights away, but I can start building. Unless you guys start, uh, or you're not gonna approve it for some major reasons. I don't wanna risk anything, so. My, I'm really pleased to hear you say that you feel very good about this project, so we can maybe take the risk. And start construction. Five, five weeks are important in construction and somewhat, you know?
You, you could not, uh, this, you're really gonna need to get this from the administration. Anything that can be done under a building permit, I suspect you're able to do. But anything with the outdoor facade, et cetera, et cetera, you would not until you get our permission and. No residential occupancy could occur until you get that special approval.
Not a problem. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I, I just want to add on, I'm, I think I'm really pleased with your price point. I mean, we see a lot of, uh. Proposed luxury housing coming through here and particularly seeing studio and one-bedroom available. I think that will be. Very valuable to a lot of people who work in this town and, uh, I hope we're able to attract them here.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're gonna do that. We promise. It's in the plans.
Okay. Okay, um, any other questions for the doctor or for Robert while we have him here? What are the price points on those? Do we know?
Yes, we do, uh, and they're not official or finalized, but really, I mean, we start. Uh, down from eight hundred up to two thousand, so.
Thank you.
That includes, uh, one parking space or maybe two with the two-bedroom?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we will see you and Robert in about a month.
Thank you so much.
Chairman McGee.
Thank you.
Chairman McGee, you need a formal motion to set this for a public hearing.
Yes, yes, thank you. Do we have such a motion?
Don't move.
And supported?
Supported.
Been moved and supported?
Who moved the motion? I, I couldn't see.
Bivakwa.
Oh, thank you.
And, uh, Patty, did you do the sport?
Yeah, I support it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Bivakwa?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Nagi?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay.
We hear another member. Oh, there we go.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doctors. We'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Introduce our newest, uh, member here?
Oh my gosh, he's cute.
She's of age.
Oh my gosh, look at.
Who do we have here? Who do we have here?
This is Scarlett. She's almost two.
Hi, Scarlett, how are you? Welcome to the public.
I have another one. All right.
Oh, wow. Hello.
All right, next is, uh, uh, item number seven. Discussion regarding a proposed four-story, forty-unit, multi-family project. Located at two-ten diversion. Uh, again, I remind everyone, this is not on the agenda for any action tonight. It's strictly informational. And with that, I'll turn this over to Vidya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will have to defer to, uh, Nick. Nick will introduce the applicant and we are basically going to. Uh, put forth their idea in front of you, so the planning commission can see what exactly they are proposing. So I'll defer to Nick on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll thank you. Uh, last week I got to meet two gentlemen that are.
Mr. Chairman, I'll thank you. Last week I got to meet two gentlemen that are gonna present tonight. We went out to the site. I, I'll let them give you the history of the site. I'll just give you a quick synopsis that a lot of you know Jonathan Crane. He's been an attorney. He started the cell phone. He was the first cell phone attorney, I think. Cell tower attorney. John's on Rochester. He's owned this property since maybe the eighties or the nineties. And there was an approved office building, I believe, back in 1992, but he never built it. The little piece of property zone, office, it's right on the embankment of the bridge. So these gentlemen have optioned the property. They have a short window to go hard with him for, for money down, down. We went out and looked at it and I thought it appropriate. They, they are familiar with the area. They, you'll see in the presentation, they talked about relationship of looking off the bridge, bond desk, Angot, all the different buildings. So it's pretty intriguing. It would have to be a special project. And it's in the, within the Pika district. And the next, if we someday approve the new zoning classifications, or as we go through the master plan upgrade, we go along those lines, it was looking for mixed use in this area. So they're gonna talk about, we, we, we had a frank conversation about traffic, the impact on the current that road. How much can we take down there? Perspective from the bridge, what we're gonna see off the bridge. They are all made aware of that. And maybe I'll turn it over to them, Mr. Chairman, and I'll let them make presentation. Okay, gentlemen.
Sure. First, thanks for having me. I know this was kind of on short notice. Nick was able to get us on the agenda tonight for this informal discussion, so I really appreciate that.
And you are?
Oh, but sorry, Roger Barrett. I'm the owner and architect of the project. So.
Okay, thank you.
I've been a resident of Shelby Township in Rochester my entire life. I went to the University of Michigan. Actually got married and moved back to Rochester, lived, rented a second floor of a house at 308 West Fourth Street for a while and then got married and now I live just north of Tinkin off of Orion in Rochester Hills. So I've been familiar with the area my entire life. I grew up here. I went to Deosel, Michigan. So I've been a lifelong resident of the area. And one of the things that has always, always intrigued me, especially as an architect, is the diversion South Street area of Rochester. It feels like the piece that is the next to be developed, but it never ends up moving forward. The cement plant, our site, and then all of South Street. It just seems like it has so much potential it needs to be tapped. So as I've been doing work as an architect in the area, I've always had my eye on the site and it's become within potential now for me to tie up sites and do certain development work for myself. I partnered with a few other people on the project. But tonight, what I'd like to do is walk through our idea for the site, our idea for the project. As sort of a keystone piece and a catalyst for that area long term. We think it's important to do it in an appropriate manner, one that respects the existing area, the existing topography, traffic and everything that Nick basically mentioned. So I'm gonna try to share my screen here. I put a quick presentation together and then at the end I have a 3D model that we can kind of move around and, and look at and anyone can feel free to ask me questions. So let's see. So can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. So just to get everyone oriented with the site, north downtown Rochester is up here. Our site is right here. We're calling it 210 diversion based on the address. So you can see some of the areas that have potentially been in front of you for development in the past. I know Riverfront Place is pretty current. The cement plant, there's been discussions over time and then a few of these bigger areas have come and gone and come back. We feel that this site being 35 to 40 units and maybe 80 parking spots at the most is an appropriate sized site and development for this area, especially for one that would be a catalyst or kind of the starting piece for the project. So to just familiarize yourself, obviously everyone knows the site, just under the bridge. This is looking from the bridge and then looking directly south at the site. Couple more images coming around diversion. And then, of course, the other key aspect of this building is coming down South Main Street, Rochester Road. The building would be located basically from this telephone pole to this telephone pole. That's where it would fit in this, in these images.
And we'll see. We didn't see your pointer or I didn't.
Oh, you didn't. Sorry. I don't, can you see my pointer or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's from this telephone pole.
Yes.
This one.
Okay, yep, got it, got it.
That, that's the subject property and then it would go to the west.
How many feet back from, let's say that guard rail, would your property line be?
It's about 30 feet, I believe, 20 to 30 feet.
Okay.
I have a survey we can look at as we move along here. Again, some more views towards where the site would be. So as mentioned, here's the survey. So it's, it's a really interesting site. As Nick mentioned, it, it was originally zoned industrial and this sliver piece still is industrial. This was the piece that was rezoned back in the 19, early 1990s to office. There's a third piece of this property which is in Rochester Hills and is zoned actually single family, but it's completely landlocked and there's no way to get to it without access through these other sites. So what we're proposing is to keep the building completely in Rochester. So the proposed footprint would be this orange dashed outline. The Rochester Hills piece, we would propose to accommodate the floodplain, any wetlands that we might encounter and stormwater detention for the building in sight. So.
No parking.
Parking? Sorry.
No parking on that green piece?
It could potentially be parking if, if we needed it. We don't feel like we do at this point. But if extra parking or we couldn't accommodate it, we could use that to park, yes. Although it does get really steep in this corner, so it would probably most likely be in the front half of this piece. As you can see, this red dashed line kind of comes into our site and then back out. That is the current floodplain. So the first floor here is in the floodplain. We would hope, and then talking to my surveyor in Civil, to be able to regrade the floodplain again to kind of keep it onto this piece and open up the parking garage. And the first floor for a potential mixed use workspace, office space, or some other type of first floor space. Again, you can see from the corner of that concrete kind of embankment for the road, our site is 30 feet off of that.
Okay.
So it's.
Where's the mobile station?
Excuse me?
Where's the mobile station?
Mobile, you can catch the corner of it right here.
Okay.
It's actually, the mobile drains onto this site. It dumps water down the hill onto the site. So mobile is down at that corner.
Who, who does own that site between mobile and your proposed property building here?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know, honestly. I don't, I don't think anyone owns the pieces between the road and the ones that we're talking about. I don't know if that's city or.
Maybe state, right?
We, we, we think that might be right away. I know Bashir owns an easement there, but Bashir, Bashir owns, Bashir, Iowa, who owns the mobile?
Okay.
So I just, so that kind of gives you an idea of what we're dealing with. And in talking to Nick, you know, he mentioned potentially special projects, rezoning. I'm sure there's a couple of steps we potentially would have to go through to get this, you know, figured out. But we're happy to do that and work with you guys on how, how to accomplish that potentially. The next set of slides is just a brief discussion on where the design developed from and how, how it came about. So this, of course, is looking from the north to the south of the site. You can see the line between Rochester and Rochester Hills. The site itself that we're talking about, that includes the Rochester Hills piece is about three quarters of an acre. So the first grade level would be the parking garage, potentially some commercial mixed use in the corner. So then this would be sort of the maximum residential volume, three to four floors above the parking garage. And so what we did in terms of the design is start to look at maximizing the envelope, views and daylight. So that led us to this H, H, H shaped plan. And then as we went further in, you can see that starts to allow daylight views out and again opens more perimeter for windows for each of the, the units. And then we further dissected the volume on the Rochester roadside to break up the scale to something that was more appropriate to the downtown area and the buildings surrounding it. So what we did is stepped the building in as it got towards downtown. Again, allowing these units to have views directly north to downtown. Especially, you know, obviously during the Christmas time, but all year round. That's, that is an optimized view for sure. Then what we looked at was stepping the building up as we got out of downtown to match the grade of the road and the hill behind us. And you can see here that we would align the front piece here and then step up as we go back with the idea that potentially in the future, this, which is the scuba shop right now, which I believe was just sold, might be a two or three story office building. So that we wanted the building to be appropriate to the context in terms of height and then views to Rochester. The other thing we started to look at is elevating the green space with the parking garage. So that you have elevated green space that continues out to the units on the second floor and then potentially green space on the roof. And then finally adding built-in planter boxes strategically placed throughout the building again to emphasize the wooded area, the green space, and then just the nature of the site itself. So just to get to a quick plan, these are preliminary, but they are thoughtful and thought out. So right now, this is showing an idea where we could have a co-working space, coffee shop or some other space in the building, the main lobby for the building and then parking of 65 to 85 parking spots. Again, depending on our unit count and our unit mix. And then leaving this space, at least for now, untouched. So this would be the, the second floor plan or what we're calling the garden level plan. It has approximately 12 units. These units would each have part of their elevated green terrace space and then areas for seating outside of their units. So these would be just above grade, kind of at the level or just below the level of Rochester Road. And then Rochester Road would be on this side of the building. And so these units are facing north. And then you can see the stepped units also have views north to downtown Rochester. On this level, we would have a fitness center, storage units, mail, a business office, a leasing office. So amenities for the tenants themselves. The unit mixes would go anywhere from about 1,800 two bedrooms down to 900 square foot, one bedrooms or one and a half bedrooms. And then some 1,400 and 1,200 and then some smaller, even 850 unit spaces. The third level is similar to the second, but now we have all units. So we have 14 on this floor. 14 on the fourth. And then what we're proposing right now is sort of a fifth level with three units and then a roof deck and then a green roof area for the remainder or a majority of the roof itself. These units would have 360 degree views and be kind of the top piece of the building when you come into Rochester. This is just kind of a look and feel for the building. It's more about the color and material for the exterior, kind of a, a classic, but modern beige tan cream color. And then the units themselves would have polished concrete, the tall curtains for the big windows and then aluminum glazing systems. So that is the end of this piece. I'm gonna switch now. Can everyone see this now?
Yes.
The 3D model? Okay.
No. No, no 3D model yet.
We're still looking at the rendering of the building.
The, the inspiration.
Yeah, let me try to share this piece now. Where did we go? I'm gonna stop sharing this and then I'm gonna hear the other. Okay, here we go. Okay, did that show up for everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to go slow. Sometimes this thing gets a little squirrely, but, so here's the proposed design. This is looking south down Rochester Road from the bridge area. So you can see we're stepping up as we get away from downtown Rochester and we're stepping in as we get into Rochester. So.
Roger, sorry to interrupt. What's the maximum height of the building?
The maximum height of this building here? Yeah, I think we're at like 58 to 60 feet, I believe. So first we'll look kind of from diversion and coming up and around the bend. So this is the idea of the potential mixed use commercial space. Again, some of that's gonna depend on parking and depend on how many units we could potentially get in the building to make it make sense. You know, you can think about this project a lot of ways. It's the same as the first street office. So it works in the same way in terms of parking with the garage in and the garage out and then the retail component on the first floor here. The other aspect of it are these elevated green terraces with that go around on the second floor. And then you can see the planter boxes throughout on the facade, again, to kind of tie in the back wooded area to the building. And then finally the rooftop deck would be here again with views to downtown Rochester.
All of the green terraces are, are considered usable. Residents could go out on them?
Yes, that's the intention. Yes. And then each unit would have its own terrace balcony off of it on the side here. These lower, these, whoops, sorry, these second floor units, again, here's the usable space they could walk out onto. And of course, the other key component for this piece is coming into downtown Rochester and what that view is of the building. So I'm trying to. So the idea here again is to kind of step up from downtown, up the hill to the gas station. And then again, match whatever potentially could be here in the future in terms of the height, making it an appropriate scale coming into downtown. And then, so this side would also have the green terraces, balcony units and then the cement plant side. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss, you know, obviously this is an informal discussion, so I'm happy to try to answer anything I can.
Looking north, are you able to turn on any of the? I'll call it the downtown skyline so we can see that perspective from your building.
You know, I haven't modeled that yet, but I it's one of the next things I want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to put out under existing office, remember, even if we don't change the district on master planning. To Rivers Edge or wherever it was going to be. You could build an office building here and whatever the height is, it can be pure office. And I think we all. Are thinking differently about office buildings right now with what's going on. I don't think we're going to have a big demand for office ever again. Quite frankly, so it is zoned office. So this would have to probably go to a consent rezoning. It's not in a Pika area necessarily, so it might have to be a consent zoning to RM one or or whatever we're going to come up with. Like you said, we're going to have to get a little creative if you like this, but the point of tonight was before he spends a lot more money. What what's the thoughts in commission?
Is this walkable to downtown, literally walkable to downtown?
Yeah.
How so?
This walk downs occurred when something goes at the plant, cement plant, there'll be required sidewalk. Remember? When Joey was going to put his building in there, he had tied it all into the curve and stopped at this property. And then you go over the bridge and then up through the wall. Until we get our walkway at Riley's piece, where we'd have that stairwell that comes down, so.
Nick, I just wanted to provide a clarification. This property is part of Pika.
Oh, is it? Okay. Oh, because well, remember we changed the Pika area and I can't find any map. We took out Joey's. And I thought we took this out at the same time. I we got to research that.
Those parcels are in the new zoning district. We call it the Rivers Edge District. This parcel will fall under the Rivers Edge, the. Cement batch plant site, this parcel and one more are three parcels in the Rivers Edge District.
Right. Are you sure it's the Rivers Edge Pika or do we get rid of that? You know, right now, Rivers Edge doesn't exist, so is it? I don't think it's in a Pika right now. Under the existing master plan from twenty fourteen. I don't know, right?
The distinction being if it's in a Pika would have special projects ability.
Correct.
Correct. To me, it looks like it is in fact in the twenty fourteen Pika, but I will double verify with Nick if this parcel is in it. Looks like it is within the Pika boundaries.
Yeah.
Roger, any consideration of a staircase up to the sidewalk on the bridge?
I have not thought about that, but. It's funny you say that because this morning I went by to take some pictures. And I'd literally walked right up the hill. There's already a manmade footpath that steps right up to this to the the road.
That's a very wide. Up there and be interesting. It was approachable.
Yeah.
I I have a question for Vidya. Vidya, what's what's the current maximum height allowed under the office zoning?
She's on mute. Uh oh. She's on mute. We can't see her.
We can hear you though.
We're also looking.
I'm so sorry. I just ran to grab hold of the zoning ordinance. I'm looking at it right now. Please continue. I will get back to you right away.
And the the other comment I I'd just like to make is, you know, I I I think that that eighty eighty five cars is is. You know, not a terrible thing down under there, but then one of the things that we have to consider is. You know, we've been talking about this for months and months is trying to consider all the projects that are under consideration in front of us and how they're. You know, going to holistically impact the area. And when you start now talking about this as eighty five plus the possible. Randazzo project, you you know, we're upwards of four hundred cars now down on this this street that has. Very little way to get in and out of, so I'd just like to mention that that's a concern.
And it's a good point.
I I appreciate this Patricia Clark Martin. I appreciate this sensitivity of the views that you. Have put into this, the open space. It's refreshing to look at. My. What's going through my head right now is I'm wondering. This is this is like a standalone piece. So I'm wondering how fitting in with the context of the community, if this is in the vision of what. We are wanting stylistically.
Mr. Chairman, you mean the architecture of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
It's beautiful.
But but very modern.
Yes, and it it's a standalone piece. It's very sensitive. I love, I I love how you. Consider the massing, the views, the sensitivity of the site. And and maybe there's a way to. Address materials.
Chairman.
I don't know. Do you want to?
Well, Mr. Chairman, so again, I think everybody's got to go out there and look. You have Angot, Bondess, First Street Loss and those three that are all brick buildings. That look nothing like Rochester until you hit the end of the bridge, then it becomes Second Street Downtown. Federal Express or Kinko's and Penn Station. That's a traditional little strip center.
I mean, this is beautiful.
Yeah, so this is this is a little different. You have to be fair about that. Because Rochester doesn't start to Second Street Downtown. This is, somebody already did this long before any of us got here. They cracked that nut with very contemporary buildings. And that's why when we met on the site, he's like, if I make it look like the north in the town, it would be out of whack with what's there now. Again, what you see coming down the bridge. I remember the first time coming into Rochester thinking, where's Rochester? This is like any other suburban office market. As you come down the bridge, then boom, it's Second Street. Now it's traditional. So he can show that. I think that's why the chairman asked for that view. Ultimately, he'll model that and see that. That was what Mr. Riley was trying to prove that until you hit Second Street, it's not traditional yet. So just for information.
Chairman McGee, I have an answer to a council member's last question. Under the office district, maximum volume of building height is thirty five feet or two and a half stories. But in the twenty fourteen master plan, this was designed at the River District and the River's Edge District requirements that were put in place. Where maximum building height shall not exceed five stories or sixty feet. However, all buildings taller than three stories shall include a stepped back design. Where the wall setback must be increased for every additional story above the third story level. So I think the applicant has sort of tried to use that step design. I don't know exactly what the order is, but it. But it does allow for five stories and sixty feet in the reverse.
The concept is here, but 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 the changes were never never adopted, right?
That's correct, correct. So those don't matter right now. They're good guidelines, but they don't matter.
The clarification, the district text was adopted, the zoning map was not, so we have the district regulations on paper. That was adopted by city council. That was the first zoning district that was adopted, so the text of that district is. On the record. We just don't have the zoning map, so you cannot apply it like next.
Right, right. So we right now it doesn't exist because we did not adopt the zoning map, even though. We and we might not adopt it ever, we might go into the. Master plan adopt them exactly how we did it. We don't know. Council of the block was right. At this point, it's only an office in industrial, just to be clear.
Well, I one one of the things that I keep coming across just researching the zoning and the the master plan and the sustainable design plan. And every is the language about tapering the angle of the height as you get away from town. I believe just based on that angle and and the buildings that are in front of us and where we're going. You know, I I don't know if that's applicable right now, but I think we would be well within that that angle moving away from downtown. You know, if if height is an issue or, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there that that's something. I don't know if that's in play or if it's.
Was in play and it has been discussed. It just has not been completely adopted.
Okay.
I I was wondering if I can have a screenshot option to. Show you the River's Edge District boundaries. I know it doesn't materially really matter, but. Whether the master plan is fully taken out or we take bits of what previously the planning commission and city council have worked on and adopted. I wanted to show the boundaries that this parcel is in fact part of the Pika boundary.
Do you need to stop sharing to do that?
I I can request remote control.
Yeah.
I'm requesting control and you need to give me control. Okay. Okay, I I am controlling your screen and say, no.
Okay.
No, no, I don't want to control your screen.
Roger, you'll have you have to stop sharing your screen and then Vidya can do hers.
Okay, there we go.
Let me, I know. So this is the River's Edge District that was adopted by. The city council. This was the map that went with the River's Edge District. So if you look, this is your parcel, isn't it, Roger?
Yes, and then the Rochester Hills piece behind.
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Those three. Yes.
Yeah, it's technically the text is in there. So the reason why I'm mentioning this is when the planning commission discussed it. I wanted to clarify what were the design visions they had for this district and this parcel. So that's the only relevance of it.
So you're getting too technical for me, but I you know. Trying to understand this adoption of the or the change of the map. Does it have to be done for all pending changes or can one be added? I I don't know how that works.
Typically, when a new zoning district text is adopted, you change the map and the map is adopted and the district comes into play. We did multiple districts, but at the time the planning commission and council decided, let's wait to finish all the districts and we adopt it in one go. So we adopted the text for, I believe, seven zoning districts.
Yes.
But we never adopted the zoning map. It's like you came to seventy percent of the rate, eighty percent of the race and then you stopped twenty meters shy of the finish line. So that's where we are right now.
Did we stop for a reason? I I remember that's when I first came on adapting all of those new districts.
We have three district text amendments that were finally before the council that which got put on hold. So the entire thing got on hold and. At this time, the city has gone off a new RFPs for the master plan, so everything is on hold, status quo at this time.
It came from the city council.
Dennis, we 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 had the elections with the five year window for doing the master plan had expired. And now we're on to our next one. It's not bad information to have and we could. Take up that again when we go through the next update with our master plan. So what Vidya is talking about is really work that's been done. It's good to, I guess, have this knowledge. It's not live. Our previous stuff is the live.
So Vidya, what would a path for approval be for these gentlemen?
I'm I'm sorry.
What would a pathway for approval be for these gentlemen?
Roger can still apply. It is still within the Pika boundary. Technically, he can apply for special projects consideration at this time, just like. Any of the other applicants.
Nick, is that how you understand this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, so we're not, you're not facing an insurmountable object is what I wanted you to understand.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other commissioners, love to have your input.
I got a couple here. Well, since we're talking process, maybe first and foremost, so we have one of the parcels sits in Rochester Hills. And I saw that you're contemplating manipulating some floodplain and detention over in that in that area. I guess maybe question for Vidya is what's the process going to be with Rochester Hills? Would they need to be part of this? Is this a joint?
Typically, when you have a parcel like this where the development spans across two municipal jurisdictions. You will have an interjurisdictional agreement.
Right.
And that depends on how you want to do it and that is something we have been discussing with Blaine and Nick and we are. Sharing my colleague Julie has put together. How other communities are doing it. In some cases, in my experience, it's been that one community will say, okay, since the building is located in your site. You take control, let them keep to your standards. Sometimes they work together as a team and say, no, they have to meet. Minimum for both community standards. So the question is, we will have to work with Rochester Hills to find out. A path forward. There'll have to be some kind of agreement between the two.
Now, just just not exactly.
Yeah, just for the record, so Roger initially showed me he doesn't need that parking. If he doesn't need it for parking.
Then we don't have a problem.
Right, but if but if he needs it for anything to do with the project, yeah. And remember, we have all the US scuba shop. That's probably coming back here pretty soon and that's going to be a joint meeting. So we have two or three opportunities to do that, but. If he designs it without leaving that extra parking, he wants that someday later down the line from carports or whatever. Then he could go there when you have to go to us, so.
Roger, why don't you say that's own single family in Rochester Hills?
Yeah, it's currently zone single family, but it's essentially landlocked. There's no way to get to it.
So Nick, just a quick clarification. Rochester Hills will have no problem to accommodate the detention for a building that is located. In the city of Rochester?
I don't know. That's where he.
And is this, are these going to be condos or are these apartments?
The idea right now, they're for rent apartments.
Apartments, okay.
Yeah.
He can literally build tanks underground under the parking garage and contain his own water if he had to. If that was a problem, so we talked about that too.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, I'd like to minimize Rochester Hills involvement as much as possible, just to knock off.
Two governments and more complicated.
So just a couple other things if I could. Did you, have you looked into any environmental issues on the property? Do we know anything about that?
As a matter of fact, I just got the phase one environmental back on Friday and they did not find any issues with the site. They did not recommend going to a phase two.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's good.
It was a house in the past.
Yeah, she said he was at the fire when.
I was at the fire when the house burned down.
Yes, Mr. Crane has owned it since nineteen eighty four and has not done anything with it, but what I understand. There were two houses on it. One got knocked down and then there was one left and then that one is gone, so.
So I I just some just quick feedback from from me just overall. I think it's.
Yeah.
I think it's a great use for the property. I I'm excited about it. I think it's a pretty, pretty slick project and a nice, a nice looking. You know, orientation and how you fit that building in, some nice views and everything there. I I guess one clarification, if if you would, it's you some of the green areas that were on the second floor and on the roof.
Yeah.
I heard you say that those were going to be active green space areas as opposed to just kind of passive. You might, for me. If I had a preference, it would be that those would be passive, just thinking, I'm thinking of. You know, driving across the bridge and looking at a bunch of people gathering on the roof, hanging out, that sort of thing. Not sure if that's. The best look or not. Just something to consider, I would say. I a similar comment, I think, on the. And saw the Randazzo apartments there to the north as they were looking at kind of gathering areas. You know, those could be done tastefully, but then again, you never know, once once renters are in there, how they're going to occupy it. So something to consider there. And then, you know, the architecture, it is more modern. I think it's going to take a little, a little getting used to, at least maybe for me. I'm not opposed to a little bit more of a modern look as you're sort of on the outskirts of town. I don't necessarily feel that it has to blend perfectly with. With downtown, but I think, you know, some some. Some thought and discussion on on the architecture could be forthcoming potentially, but I the overall, the use that I think is great and I'm excited to see it. Advance here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brother, this is, this is Sarah King and I kind of want to echo some of the sentiments, I think. Incredibly well-designed building. I lived in a high-rise in Chicago for a number of years. I would have loved to have seen units of this size. It's hard, hard to find something like that. I think people would appreciate that. I love the use of the green spaces as well, the outdoor gathering spaces. Um, the outdoor gathering spaces, I think is, is really nice. Um. I do however though, like I love the architecture, but I also kind of worry about how it would fit. I think seeing it maybe with, you know, the, the surrounding buildings would be helpful. But um, just to, you know, consider how it's gonna blend into the city.
Yeah, understood. And, and that's, that, some of that I can definitely play with in terms of tweaking the material or the color. Um, and, and, and one of the drawbacks of the 3D model is it doesn't give you that full sense of the building. So um, you know, the next step, if this moves along, would be to do some more rendering. That's a little more detailed or photorealistic in terms of colors and materials. But I definitely want to get the context of the rest of town into the model, because I, I agree, that'll, that'll help a lot. With getting an idea of how it fits.
Others.
Does anyone uh know the height of that uh building just to the north across diversion that uh with the ampersand on it?
I believe it's around fifty-five, fifty to fifty-five feet.
Four stories, is it?
That one is four stories, yes.
I was just curious, thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, um, so I guess the, the process Vidya is, or, or Nick. So it's a special project, so special project to the planning commission and then it'd have to come to the city council. Okay.
That's correct.
And so this is just to say we're okay with it to proceed? Or uh exact.
Yeah, that, that's it, Mister Mayor. Just if, if there was a, Roger, you can speak, but if there was a heck no, I think he goes away. And, but he's not, I, I told him not to expect anything other than hopefully not a heck no.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I. You, you, I, I, I guess I, I would not say heck no. How, how, how's that? I mean, I think it's a. You know, it's a, it's a nice looking building. I mean, from my perspective, now again, I don't know if it fits exactly. Um, you know, I, I try not to put my own opinion on buildings too much. Um, so, you know, I think as somebody said, I think the, maybe the office buildings. You know, might, might not be in its vogue right now because people are gonna be working from home potentially. I think Mister Randazzo said that and we maybe didn't. He said that pre-COVID though, so, uh, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know what that meant exactly. But, you know, as I think as Mayor Proton Babakwa said, I mean, you know, my only concern is, yeah, you, you have. Potentially a lot of people in a small little area that's hard to get in and out of. So I mean, I guess that's something I, I'd have to consider. Um, but you know, just the look of the project and the idea of the project and stuff. Um, you know, I'm, I'm okay with and willing to look at the next step. Thank you.
Mister Stone, any input?
Uh, nothing new that has not already been voiced. I personally like the look. I like the use of all the glass. Uh, I like how you've blended it into the side of the hill. I'm slightly concerned about the drainage plan with the. Unusable uh piece of property to the uh directionally south in the uh Rochester Hills. Um, Roger, does all the parking end up under the building on the first floor?
At this point, yes, that's the plan.
Okay, and you're gonna have all of your mechanical rooms in the first floor uh that support the building? And they won't be on the, the, the.
Roof.
We're not gonna have rooftop units that are exposed to the street as I drive up Rochester Road and look at your beautiful building years?
No, that, that frankly is one of my pet peeves, so that definitely won't be happening on this.
It's also a pet peeve of mine, if you couldn't tell. So no, I, I think it's a great addition to that part of town and uh, I, I, I'm a little concerned about the first floor retail. I, I don't know uh who would rent that, because it's kind of a, an interesting space to be located in. It's like a transitional piece between uh the old industrial piece just to the uh, directionally to the east. With all of the service garages and, and uh warehouse type facilities. And then that street swings north uh to, you know, traditional downtown. So uh it'd be kind of a, a roll of the dice, in my opinion, for a retailer, but.
Maybe barren architects go in there.
Right.
Well, I think it's a great addition.
That's, that's a thought and, you know, one of the things we've looked at too is making it a co-work space that people from the building could use. Um, as office space or conference room space, so, or people in the community for that matter, so.
It's, it's a good first step and I'm glad you're here tonight to show us it.
Thank you.
Would the planning commission uh give some direction? Because on devotion and first three, every project, I think the significant point on which we have got stuck is traffic. So is there anything you would like Roger to bring forth before you next time? So that he doesn't take all the effort to design a building and architecture and all of that and.
Well, the first thing I, I would ask Vidya is that you work with the administration and give us absolute clarity about this. The status of this piece of property, you know, where it actually is uh master plan and zoning ordinance wise. That, that's very important. It sounds like we, we're pretty sure where we are, but I would sure like to see it. Clearly establish what its status is. Um, just speaking from the chair, I, I love the concept. Um, it's a very difficult site and uh. You know, I, I'd love to see it developed in this way, other than another office building. Um, when I think of the parcel next door and the old buses and antique semis that have been sitting there and that. Floodway for all these years. I mean, it's a terrific step upward for us. And uh, you know, the, the architecture, I, I love the uh, the box itself. I, I would like to see you age it. That's the term I've kind of come to uh, uh, to use. So you can age, keep this, keep the shapes and all those sorts of things. But somehow or another, uh, age the buildings uh look just a little bit somehow or another. I think that would be really helpful, but otherwise, um, I think it would be a great addition and I, I'm. Encouraging you to move forward, one, particularly once we've established what the status of the property is.
Mister Chairman, two things. I'm gonna, I'll have him meet with our engineers, so we can have some dialogue about that. So we don't throw them a wrench later and say, uh, you had to use the hills properly. Then we would have to engage the hills. And then second, um, we got our second proposal for a traffic study, so we have two now. We're gonna bring that forward quickly, because you're right, we're kind of stuck in this hamster wheel without having this traffic decided. It's a substantial amount of money, but if that's what it takes to get us all the open comfortable with data that comes in.
We have to do that.
Our model. Yep, so we're gonna try to hurry up and get that to you.
I, I think it's important to several of the commissioners that, that be uh completed. Before we move ahead, move ahead with a lot of these different things. We just have to do that. Thanks for coming in, Roger. I think uh, great ideas. Um, uh, great uh. Information in terms of how the city is developing and uh, a, a great vision on how to use a very difficult piece. Look forward to seeing you come back.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And uh, we'll move as quick as possible. We'll work with Nick and uh, keep things moving forward. Thank you. Thank everyone for your time.
Posted at some point, we'll become more official in terms of our action and Vidya can guide you in terms of that.
And maybe we can do this in person.
Okay, that would be, that would be great.
Be nice too. All right, thank you.
Uh huh.
Hey Dennis.
Yes, sir.
Yes, um, maybe looking at, at the time, um, you might wanna release. Um, Julie, because I don't think we're gonna get to the uh infill development discussion time.
I'm okay with that. Is anyone on the commission, uh, would you have an objection if we put off? Uh, item number nine until some date in the future? I don't hear any objections, Blaine, so uh, we'll, uh, when I come to that, we'll uh, deal with it. But uh, Julie, uh, thanks for hanging around and we'll see you sometime in the future.
Thanks, Dennis.
Uh huh. Okay, the next item, uh, number eight, presentation and discussion on temporary outdoor dining. And parklets. COVID comes to visit us again. Now, who would have thought, sitting at the uh. February planning commission meeting, that we will be talking about parklets. That's how our world has changed.
Not me, Mister Chairman, I can assure you.
Yeah, it's crazy. Uh, who is gonna make this presentation? Are you gonna do that, Ben?
Uh, yes, sir. I think it's gonna be a tag team effort, so let me take a moment to introduce myself. For those that don't know me, my name is Ben Giovinelli. I am the chairman of the Rochester Downtown Development Authority. Uh, prior to my gig here, I was a city councilperson for twelve years. So I'm fully familiar with uh several of the faces here, but there are some new ones. I want to take a moment to introduce myself. And also, uh, this evening, uh, uh, Christopher Travaro, our director, is uh going to be, we got, I think, uh, three or four slide. Uh, Dex is gonna kind of walk you through, we'll cook what, what we've been up to. And then Nick. So just as a quick um sort of background, uh, it's funny you bring up February, uh, Mister Chairman, because uh. Uh, back in February, we were working on the budget for the DDA and we had been saving for several years to uh, develop the uh. Ended up being a plan to develop the farmer's parking lot, farmer's slot. And uh, we were prepared to uh go big and come with a request for some big dollars and to do a really fantastic sort of city square. Um, uh, project. Um, but as the old saying goes, the more you plan, the more God laughs. So as soon as we got through the first uh iteration of our budget, uh, I believe that is when um. Uh, Dr. Fauci came out and then sort of everything took off from there. So we've been um, sort of working on the fly, trying to stay in front of this. It's a, it's like, one of my partners referred to it as playing a basketball game where the three-point line is continually moving and so is the backboard. And uh, the refs are changing the rules every five minutes, so, um, but that, that being as it is. Uh, the DDA and the principal shopping district have been working tirelessly. We've been getting together every week at seven PM. If anybody's bored on Wednesdays at seven, you feel free to join us. Um, but we're trying to sort of stay ahead of ways to. Uh, get the downtown back open and get people returning to the uh, air quote, new normal, whatever that is going to be. Um, so um, uh, so sadly, I guess the way it sort of worked out is, is the DDA uh budget uh just got approved by council. I want to say about uh three weeks ago or so. Uh, the monies we had set, set aside for the um, uh. The town square sort of farmer's market development uh have been used. Uh, we've instead taken those dollars and redirected about uh four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of the budget uh to uh the parking fund to provide park free parking from April first through September thirtieth. So uh, the parking structures alone are sixty-three thousand dollars a month in debt service and when there's nobody parking there. Still gotta make the payments, so uh, the DDA stepped up and took money from capital and took care of that. Uh, we've also authorized uh the um, I guess the repayment, the process we're sort of working out now. But uh, we're not charging the principal shopping district assessment for this coming year. It's about three hundred thousand dollars the DDA has absorbed, which was also from our capital. Uh, and then uh, we've also set away, uh, set aside other monies as well. So we've got about uh eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of skin in the game so far. Uh, to try and prop up uh the parking district and um, uh, taking care of the principal shopping district assessment. And uh, various marketing efforts. So in going through this process, um, trying to figure out what the new normal will be. Working within the constraints of government and um, uh, the challenges that Lansing's put before us. Um, we're trying to figure out the best way to provide for the most amount of businesses for residents. And businesses and our stakeholders to feel comfortable to come outside. And it's been readily apparent that. Uh, the, our life for the next three months at least is gonna be out of doors. Um, so uh, and as we started to dig into this in uh mid-April, I would say in earnest, um. What we thought was a great idea, all of a sudden was being thought of by communities all across the country. So everybody's been kind of doing the same thing. Um, in Lansing, our, our elected leaders have been also uh noticing that they've been having to step up and do some things. So uh, last council meeting, Senator McMorro uh presented uh, uh, she did her update. But one of the things she talked about was Senate Bill nine thirty-nine and the uh, the companion bill, House Bill fifty-seven eighty-one, which Rep Weber uh sponsored. Um, to create, um, oh. Oh shit, oh shit. Did I lose you guys?
We hear you.
Okay, sorry. We good? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't think we missed anything.
Oh, good, good, because it's, so I got these bows cordless sound, and when I get a phone call, my phone, it goes to my phone. And when I shut my phone off, it goes to the first song on my uh music list, which happens to be ACDC Back in Black. So all I could hear in my ear was dong.
No wonder that look uh that we just saw, yeah.
I know, it's, so whatever. I mean, a hundred bucks for headphones, I think you could get something better than that, but whatever. Uh, so anyway, as I was.
Coming.
Yeah, right. Uh, so uh, Christie and her team uh and, and the board and the PSD have been su- working super hard. To try and come up with creative ways to do stuff outdoors. And as you know, downtown, uh, we're limited in real estate, of course, to do that in. And uh, the main chunk of road that we have going through our community is not owned by us. Um, so uh, as I was talking about Senator McMorro and Rep Weber, um, uh, this coming Wednesday at eight fifteen in the morning. Uh, Christie and I have been asked to testify before the House Committee uh on Rep Weber's bill uh regarding um. Uh, downtown, opening up um, uh, downtown districts where carryout alcohol can be taken. Uh, so we'll, uh, we'll talk about that, but um, moreover, just sort of, uh, the, the one thing that we've noticed is that. Uh, Liquor Control Commission, um, uh, MDOT, everybody's super receptive to not doing things how we've always done them. Uh, because they know we're living in, in interesting times and trying to um, you know, sort of reinvent. I, I always refer to it as rewiring a seven forty-seven at forty thousand feet. Um, but uh, uh, the one thing that we've been working on is this outdoor dining concept and how to expand it. And I don't know if any of the commissioners have ever been to Birmingham or Ann Arbor or other communities that have these uh parklets. And or uh dining in the streets, if you will. Um, uh, so we kind of took that as our uh. Our mantra to try and come up with uh ways to expand real estate to give restaurants. As you know, the governor today changed us to, to uh level four, which is great, uh, that gives them fifty percent occupancy. But I think in the long run, we're gonna be dealing with the psychology of people of being afraid and social distancing well into. You know, I don't know when that's gonna end. I'll be perfectly honest with you. So we're trying to do what we can to help businesses. And, and our residents feel comfortable to sort of roll the stone away from the cave and come out and, and feel comfortable. Um, in, in town. Um, this, this weekend on Saturday, I don't know if anybody, I think one person had mentioned it, but uh. The farmer's market opened and uh, I mean, I let Christie jump in, but uh, I think we had over twenty-two hundred people come and uh. Uh, to a person, people were grateful to get some sense of normalcy in downtown Rochester. So we're, we're trying to foster that. So anyway, long story long, um, uh, the council, last Monday, we were talking with council, kind of pitching this idea of parklets. And, and doing things in the streets. They gave us a tentative nod, but wanted to uh have some more discussion on the safety part of it. And um, and as we were having the discussion, it would, it became abundantly clear that we needed to get in front of you guys and give you a heads up was what was, what was going on. And what our thoughts were and uh to get your feedback. The thing that we're most constrained by is time, right? So in typical process, this would be sort of, I mean, you guys know how the uh, the, the gristmill of, of, of government turns slowly, right? So uh, we just don't have the luxury of, of that um now. So we're trying to do something sort of standardized and quick and have it be administratively approved, kind of like the sign ordinances. So anyway, uh, with that, that's kind of the background of why we're here. It's more of a heads up and then kind of give you some uh feelings of where, where our thoughts are. And then uh, take any criticism and or feedback from you guys and try and incorporate that into the overall strategy, which hasn't been.
Grinds or anything to show us what you're thinking of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just gonna say, Christie's about to, to, to show you a deck. So Christie, I don't know if you can fire that up, but uh, you're on.
All right, here I go. All right, let me get this up for everybody. All right, can everybody see that? Am I good?
Yep.
Okay, this is very short, but I thought it would give a little bit of background of exactly why we're here. So we're specifically talking about the outdoor dining. Um, and although a lot of you are probably thinking, you know, why now, especially since the governor did say that we can go to fifty percent capacity starting next Monday. But as Ben said, this is a problem we're gonna be dealing with for the foreseeable future. They will have limited capacity. They're not instantly gonna go back up to one hundred. They're talking about fifty percent. Just to give you some perspective, I know some people at the beginning of the meeting were asking about La Pumas. Um, Tony was telling us that he can't operate on fifty percent because people like to be inside and have the experience of being in La Pumas. So he's actually working on setting up new seating outside, because he knows that just opening with limited capacity inside, he, he can't make the money. So he's actually working on setting up new seating outside because he knows that just opening with limited capacity inside, he can't make the money that he needs to make to make this whole thing work. And many restaurants have told us the exact same thing. The outdoor dining is going to allow us that additional seating that will not count against their indoor capacity count, which is very important. There'll still be social distancing in place and all the safety regulations, but it allows them to increase capacity without compromising that. Every single survey that we have seen over the last two months has said, generally speaking, people of all ages do want to go out, but when they go out, they want to be outdoors. And if there's an opportunity for outdoor dining at their favorite establishment, they would prefer that in the short, and we're hoping not long term, rather than being indoors. They just, they would love to have that meal, support their local business, but they're just not ready to go indoors and be next to a lot of other people quite yet. The one thing that is number one with the bullet for us is that restaurants are the biggest driver of traffic for downtown. It's a big deal that we can open our restaurants next week. This is going to help all of our retailers. It's going to help everybody. We just need to get the gyms and salons to get open, and then we'll be able to really get rolling on everything. But to be able to support the restaurants in some way is very important because it'll have a trickle down effect for all of the businesses in downtown. So when we went to council on Monday, we went there with three requests. Number one was the use of on-street parking for outdoor dining platforms. And I'll show you a picture of one that we liked in Birmingham, and we're working on some things on that right now. We were asking exactly as Ben said, an expedited approval process while still adhering to all the outdoor dining guidelines. We just needed to speed up the process. And what we were asking for specifically was an administrative approval process, and then city council would have final approval and skipping some of the other intermediary steps. And then last but certainly not least, as Chairman McGee had alluded to, parklets. Parklets really don't exist in any zoning in downtown, so we asked for them to be included in outdoor dining because they really have many of the same restrictions and safety concerns. So those were the three requests that we have. All requests were approved by city council on Monday. We do still have to go back to show them our design and what we're working on, which that's what DDA is going to be hacking through on Wednesday night at 7:00. But the one thing that we were not able to get approval for, but were able to get a, not yet, was approval from MDOT or approval from the council to allow us to put spaces on Main Street. Of course, as you know, with Main Street, we have to deal with MDOT. We have been working with them throughout. They have been open to us. Nick reached out to them again today to tell them where we're going, give them a preliminary package to get a first blush from them. And it seems like they're going to be receptive. No guarantees, nothing like that, but that will still have to go back to council because they asked us to bring up proof of concept to them, which we absolutely plan to do. Last slide, this is, we looked over many outdoor dining platforms. Many were very big, small, simple, many different versions. This is the one that the board seemed to settle on. It's just a basic track stack with railing. Now, this is something that the DDA is actually proposing, depending on pricing, that we would like to provide these to the restaurants at no cost. The restaurants would then be responsible for their own licensing, furnishings, plants, umbrellas, what have you, that they would like to put into this. But as another way for us to economically support our businesses, that we would then be providing these decks for them.
So you would actually have that built and placed for them?
Correct. That, that's the plan right now, yes. Because again, with the restaurants, keep in mind, unlike some of the retailers, and some people have been doing curbside. Many of our restaurants have been shuttered since mid-March, so they're going to be playing catch-up pretty quickly. Not to mention that I'm sure you've all read articles that the food supply chain isn't the best right now. And many of our restaurants have said they don't know that they could actually complete a full menu right now because they can't get the product that they need, or they can't get the product, but it is a much accelerated price, which isn't going to help anything. There's a lot of other new expenses they're going to have to do with their safety guidelines, disposable menus, a lot of different things, especially, at least they have a week, they got a little bit more than Traverse City to try and figure it out. So we're trying to find if there's a way that we can shoulder some expense in any way, and this was one way that we thought that we could do that. We did look at alternatively a grant program, but the numbers seem to prove out about the same way. This way, we would own these. And then these would be the things, once restaurants are settled on what they need, we get approvals from MDOT or not, approval from council or not, for the Main Street ones, we would then fabricate, place these where they are supposed to go. And then whatever spaces we have left and budget we have left, we would like to turn in a few parklets as well. For anyone who's not familiar with the parklet concept, it's essentially this.
But it's just receiving many times it's seen. And it's just a way to give people a place to sit, stay. There's actually a National Parking Day that takes place in September that is where people come and actually set up little parklets of their own in parking spaces. So we think it's an interesting concept. It's been on our radar for a little while. But as many people will tell you, the things that were on the radar and lower on the list suddenly shot up to the top of the list with what we're doing right now. And so as my chairman says, we're going to try and stick and move on everything that we can. And right now, restaurants are laser focused because we need to get them up and running as quickly as possible.
So this would be offered only in front of existing restaurants?
Yes, but also there would be opportunities on private property. So for instance, Rochester Mills had reached out to us. We did a survey of the restaurants to see if they would even be interested in this. And overwhelmingly, they're very interested. But they've already been working with their landlord over the mills, Frank Rewald, to see if they could take parking spaces within the private lot to set up some of these stacks. And that's been positive as well. But we are looking at these on-street spaces, not in surface lots, not in decks, and not in alleyways, specifically in parking spaces.
Just a couple of quick things. Mr. Chairman, I know Chief Shetland, I don't think is on the call right now. I think he's. Oh, is he? Oh, good. Excellent. So, well, he wasn't earlier. So that's, I see Chief Cecil's there. I don't see Chief Shetland.
Oh, I thought I saw Steve.
No, that's Chief John. I think Chief Steve has some other important stuff he's dealing with.
He does. We need him. I can do it.
Yeah, no worries. So, Mr. Chairman, I just really quick, wanted to do two things with respect to the safety part. So I wish Chief Steve was here. Not that I don't love Chief John, because I do. But Chief Steve came from Birmingham, so he is well-versed in these. And one of the interesting, we had tons of, of course, I mean, he always is just a wealth of knowledge. But one of the big discussion points of our last meeting was, he sort of walked us through how the concept has evolved in Birmingham. And we had talked about safety and having, you know, safety bollards and angles on both ends to keep people from parking and whatnot. And he said, in his experience, and he actually just talked to the chief, and Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he just talked to the chief in Birmingham like last week, and he said, yeah, we got rid of all that. It didn't matter. People, it's not an issue. People park right up against them, and we don't have any problem with it at all.
And they're not reported accidents or incidents with these around the country?
I mean, I was actually, I'll be honest with you, I was shocked about that. So, but as long as the guys that are dealing with that on a regular basis are good with it, then I'm going to take, you know, our, our public safety director's words more than, than anything else. And then secondarily, with respect to design, the DDA would own all those platforms. They're all going to be exactly the same. So, so we were, it would just be too hard to have 8,000 different iterations. So we're going to do them exactly the same. You're going to rent it from us for a buck. You'll get it from, you know, June 15th to September 30th, or whatever that timeframe is, and then we'll pull them up.
Covering at all? Any coverings on them or just umbrellas?
You know what? We're going to let Nick take the heat for those. So nothing, nothing too outrageous, but if it is, you can blame him.
Yeah. We had actually talked about with Bob Lumi, who's on our board, he's helping us work on the design for this, that it could have something that's an option for the restaurateur, that once they get it, they wanted to not use umbrellas, but actually wanted to do some type of a fabric roll-up awning or something like that, that it would be able to be attached or something like that. So, but we give them the base model, and then they can put the spinners on and whatever else they'd like.
You see this going into the future? I mean, Covid or no Covid, would you allow them next year or the year after?
Unfortunately, but I'm a fan.
A lot of cities have been doing it anyway, without Covid even considered.
Yeah, no, I couldn't agree more. I think, I mean, I went to Michigan and in Ann Arbor, those were a fixture all over the place. I grew up in Bluefield Hills in Birmingham, and they have been downtown Birmingham for as long as I can remember. So in fact, Dick O'Dowes was the first one. Chief actually took us on a, a, an air tour with Google Maps. We actually visited all of them this last week. So I don't, Nick, did I miss anything?
No, I would just say that, but to answer the chairman's question, so hate to be the buzz guy, a little buzzkill, but we have to determine each parking space has value to our system dollar-wise, right? So maybe it's not free next year. You rent the space. We did, if you all remember, you, the planning commission approved Roehl, and we made them, we airs eight hours a day per space for the summer. And they took two spaces. They paid that fee to rent the spaces. We didn't have a negative end of the pot for parking. So we would evaluate that next year. The cover, the cost is covered this year, but next year we would reevaluate that. And maybe they're not free anymore. They cover the cost of the parking spot. And then we know we have Chief Shetland, wanted me to make sure I said this tonight. We have to balance the reason we put all the good parking is in front on Main Street and side streets. That's the best part.
By the way, how many spots would you sacrifice doing this?
Those are just, they're just one right now, but it could be one or two. So depends on how many of these we have.
Yeah, it's 20, 30 spots, 30, 40 spots you might sacrifice on Main Street.
I was going to take a guess. It might be, Main Street probably maybe only about six to eight, maybe 10 at the max, because a lot of the restaurants have side street access, like Brunch House was interested in it.
You'd allow these on the side streets as well as Main Street?
Yeah, yeah. But I would think, as of the people, the restaurants that, we did a Google survey with all the restaurants, asking for input of what they would like. And with the restaurants that responded, we're looking at probably about 20 parking spaces. Not all of them are in public areas, though we do have a few that are on private. I think there's at least three on private.
This is a question more for the administration, but are there any, particularly if you go into the future, any property tax considerations for the operators? In other words, is this usable taxable space? And that's sort of a rhetorical question I think somebody should look into.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if you mind, I can share my screen if you guys care. Let me just do this real quick. Okay, so, sure. So this is actually what the city of Birmingham has done for the Covid-19, the different things that the city has done. And this one here is, it doesn't appear that they charge a ton of money, but what they do is they charge for the season the parking spots. So I think in a lot, and to answer your question, long-term, this is kind of what it would look like. It appears that it's like $10,000 a year in, in.
Oh, like a payment in lieu of taxes?
Yeah, exactly. So Nick would have to come up with, you know, how much the average parking spot in front of their place throws off on a yearly basis. I mean, now that we've got that electronic data, that should be very, very easy.
Okay.
That's easy to do. I, I want to just make sure that you all know that, I talked to Kristy and the board about this, that there are other businesses in town that we are worried about. So we want to make sure, like Kristy, we spread them out so that we don't have the retailer saying, hey, those are the best spots forever. So we have to balance that somehow. So.
Would you allow a, like a clothing retailer or an art store to do the same thing?
That's what the parklets, in theory, would be, that people would take, not to put their merchandise out there, but go sit and relax, but not, no, no outside retail. We had talked about this summer, not doing sidewalk sales, but there's room on some of the sidewalks to let people put some of their materials out. Like Marion puts some of his chairs out because he's got a wide sidewalk in front of him. Maybe we're a little looser on that for the retailers to have a product.
Would you let a restaurateur display some of the goods of the retailers in the, in the parklet?
Good.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about sponsoring. I mean, there's all kinds of creative ideas. I think, you know, there's always, when I was on council, there was always pushback in trying to create a bazaar in town where people walking down the street with sandwich boards. But I, I think in this, this particular case is we need to be as open to doing things different as possible. I did want to take a quick run if, if we could, Mr. Chairman. This is the governor's staging mechanism, and this is what was just announced today to this stage four. So I kind of want to talk about stage four and the rolling into stage five. And this is why I think that what we're talking about now is not going to be short-lived. Just because the restaurants are open, it doesn't mean that the, the distancing requirements are going to change. So if you see, we're in four now, so it's 50% vacancy. It's, Nick, it's six foot between tables if memory serves. So I don't expect that to change once we go from four into five, because it specifically says in the governor's guidance here that there's going to be, here's to new guidelines, which of course, we're going to be surprised at the last minute because that's the way it goes. But there's going to be continued distancing, coverings, and mitigated workplaces. So even though a restaurant may go from 50% to 100% from stage four to stage five, we're still going to be dealing with the, the space restrictions. And so there's that part. And then I think just humans on balance, you've got roughly half, over half the people that are, you know, super afraid and are driving around their car with their masks on and other people running around outside, you know, not, not a care in the world. So we have to cater to both, being most respectful of the people that, that wants, that, that want. We need them to feel safe, that it's okay. So we're going to over communicate and go over and above. But my point, main point here is that this is not going to be a short-lived thing. I, I think we get through the summer, it'll be great. If it has legs past that, we'll come back to you guys and we'll, we'll kind of, my goal would be to do a report out to the board after sort of the season goes, and we'll kind of tell you guys how it went, what our hits and misses were. And then, you know, should we decide to do this more, then we'll, you guys will absolutely be on, you know, taking, taking a seat and able to help us out.
Well, if there's a second wave, as many say, it's gonna, it's gonna make this even more important.
Agreed.
Commissioners, questions for these fine people that have come before us tonight? What do you need from us? Daddy, were you going to ask a question?
Just one question. So when I was looking at the design, it's completely surrounded by that fence. Do you have to have that interior fence?
It's going to be surrounded on three sides.
Three sides, okay.
Virtually on the front, so people can actually get into it. It will also be ADA compliant, so people would be able to access it that way as well.
I apologize if you, if I.
No, you're fine. I think that we just like that style, and so that's why I wanted to show you that photo, but yeah.
Well, actually, we're trying to keep it cheap. So, I mean, I'll.
As I was thinking too.
If it's liquor, there's going to be a different, it would have to be more like four sides with an opening if it's liquor. So LCC's got a whole bunch of rules.
It's a control point.
We'll do it.
Yeah.
And then also too, we're talking about moving all of the tables from in front of the buildings to together in the parklets. You're going to create the walk space. You're going to actually probably end up resulting in greater sidewalk space than we have at present.
Yeah.
They're all done. So, but our main objective is that, A, we didn't want you guys to find out about this, you know, and, and not be updated and know what we're thinking about. We wanted to make sure that we were respectful of, of the commission. And we got you guys bounced. And if there was any feedback or anything you wanted us to think about, that we were incorporating that because it's very, very important that all the boards and commissions work together as a finely tuned machine. And we want to be respectful of your.
Commissioners, I'm, I'm not hearing any objection to this, and I think we, anyone have any problem with this at all?
I have questions.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Godspeed.
Thank you.
I have questions.
Yes, Steve.
I guess, I guess one that I have is, what's your experience with some of the businesses that aren't going to be receiving a benefit from something like a parklet? Seeing that, you know, DDA dollars are going to be spent on it, is there concern that they may want some sort of value from, from the expenditure? Is it, yeah.
Kristy, go ahead. I can take that one. I would like, I would compare it to businesses that get the big bright lights versus businesses that don't. The overall value to downtown of having the lights, I think outweighs the fact that we don't then give a discount to Sargent Appliance and Framers Workshop for not having lights, because the value of having that many people coming to town is value enough to support that premise. Same thing with these platforms, to, as I mentioned at the slide number two. Restaurants drive traffic to our downtown. They are the number one driver, no doubt about it. So if we are able to drive the traffic down, then the other businesses will benefit. It's no different than doing sidewalk sales. That doesn't benefit the offices, but we don't give them a discount for that. So we try to do things, as Ben said, we're here because restaurants right now are laser focused because they have different challenges than other business segments. We've been doing web chats with the different groups as we go. So we have a separate track with salons. We have a separate track with retail. We have a separate track with clothing boutiques, all these different, fitness, the fitness places. Everyone has their own unique set of challenges, and we're creating new programming and different programming to benefit each one. So I think everyone's going to get their slice of the pie. The restaurant one, do I just be a little bit more visual of, oh, the restaurant's got that. But I don't think it's any different than the big bright light argument.
Right. We're bringing people downtown. That's all that matters.
Yeah, no, I'm just concerned about, you know, what folks might say in some of these other businesses.
I get it. I know. Well, they will. They will. Yeah.
Also, I have a question for Attorney Crot, if he's around.
Looks like I haven't heard him tonight.
Hi, Mr. Earl.
Hey, Jeff.
Here he is. Hello.
So I was just kind of thinking this over in terms of, you know, how we go about making sure that we can provide the authority for, for this to happen. So, you know, putting outside eating structures in place, I mean, we have, we have an ordinance and a process for that, right?
Right.
And, and that process involves going through Planning Commission and getting approvals, you know, in a certain manner. And it's detailed via ordinance. So by what authority, and I don't, I don't have a problem with any of this getting done because it needs to get done. But I'm, I'm concerned about by what authority. But I'm, I'm concerned about by what authority um, do we make that happen? Uh, and is there going to be someone else out there that says, well, I want, you know, equal treatment? And I don't want to have to go through the process for this, you know, thing that I want to do. You guys went outside the ordinances, you let it happen and um, now I want the same treatment.
Sure, I, I've got some comments on it. So as, as you know, from the last city council meeting, you know, a lot of these, these things were hammered out. As far as um, what it would look like, the compliance with the outdoor dining standards. Uh, uh, Mr. Varrago and Ben indicated uh, uh, that that would be in compliance. He can still follow those. It's just the approval process going through site plan process um, through to get the uh, to get that. So, you know, when I've looked at other communities and what they've done to, because they, you know, other communities such as Birmingham. You know, they have, they also have a, an approval process uh, for outdoor dining. And so uh, several communities I've seen have temporarily suspended the process. Um, by way of their ordinance, by resolution. Um, so you know, there's, there's different, different emergency uh, you know, scenarios that, that can play out. Um, this is a, was posed as a temporary um, for the protection of the, you know, the retail. Excuse me, the, the restaurants in, in the downtown by vibrancy. So I think city council was comfortable with uh, passing a resolution to reflect the decision. That was made Monday night, which is to temporarily suspend the part of the process, not the standards. Um, the standards, uh, I was, I, I heard clearly that the standards are going to be kept. It's a matter of um, would the city um, administration take over that uh, approval? Uh, end of it, you know, if it meets the, the standard. Right now, city council has already given um, expanded the ordinance over the years. As far as not having to come back every single year if the site plan doesn't change. Um, so there's, there's that flexibility. Um, and also the uh, you know, when the city does use. Uh, or when people do use city council uh, property like the sidewalk, you know, there's, there's a license agreement that gets utilized. So while it's not exactly following ordinance, there's provisions for. Um, that city council has directed in this, in this resolution to uh, suspend the. Going through the planning commission, site plan process, but only for the, the durability, duration of this outdoor dining season.
So, so we, we could make a resolution to circumvent ordinances without changing an ordinance? That's, that's legal?
Well, you, you've got, you see it every single day under the COVID, right? And you've got the, the governor who's uh, who's doing executive orders that, that allow and disallow things that are otherwise allowed or not. Um, so there are, there, there's absolutely in, in, I believe it's chapter two of the code. There's provisions for um, under emergency circumstances to that the mayor has the ability to uh, make rules. Uh, for utilizing of public spaces. Um, so you know, it, will I say it's black and white? Uh, Dean, no, I, I wouldn't say there's a clear precedent or a clear approval. Um, so it's, you, you're, you're going on a bit of, a bit of a gray. Um, you're not completely abandoning your ordinance. What you're doing is you're allowing, you're deferring the decision on compliance with the ordinance. Uh, to administration.
Yes, I was uh, going to ask you about that, uh, whether or not the mayor of the city. Has the emergency authority under the state law to declare this waiver. I, I would like to see that as, as an elected official in that loop. You know, as under the Emergency Powers Act, he would have the authority to waive. Or uh, direct the administration to handle the um, uh, the zoning and planning process. Only for purposes of this project here and only for the remainder of twenty twenty.
Well, and that, that's what the resolution uh, is, is what's going to come back on Monday night. Uh, you know, you're never going to find something that said exactly what, what you just said, Mr. McGee, because it's all.
Governor said that in one of her executive or, you know, one of her orders out of the hundred and twenty of them that.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Well, and she's, you know, she's been sued and been successful under the emergency.
Very successful. And that's, and that's why I would think it would be great if the mayor, under that, of the authority of the governor could do the same thing.
That is, that is one of the things that we've, we've looked at and I, I believe it's available.
I kind of like the idea of uh, having the mayor have emergency power. Um, I think my street needs to be. Purposed immediately.
Oh, here we go.
I need police protection right outside my house.
I guess this is the time where I note that we did not declare an emergency. We're underneath the counties and the states. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
But we could.
But we could.
I like that.
Uh, somebody said Godspeed. I second that. Uh, we wish you all the best and hopefully you can get it running, up and running forthwith. I mean, it's already, this weekend is going to be approaching the middle of June already. I mean.
I know, it's crazy. So uh, we're on fast forward with MDOT. That's our biggest thing. We're already working with um, the wheels are in motion. It's just going to get, we'll get them built as quick and get everybody out there. I know that everybody just, you know, wants to roll the stone away from the cave and come out. So.
Any help we can offer, uh, we're available.
That's right. And thank you. And we'll, we will uh, provide you guys with memorandum as, you know, the things sort of flush out and let you know how it's going. And if there's anything, you know, uh, reach out to Christie or myself anytime, um, you know. So thank you so much for the time. We appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, the next item is uh, number nine. And unless anyone objects, uh, we're going to waive that until a future date. I'm going to move to number ten miscellaneous, and that is for the commissioners to uh, enlighten us with any concerns they might have. Nothing. That's great. Um, I'm going to go to number eleven, public comment. I asked Sienna. Uh, any context during the meeting? Anyone want us uh, give us any public input tonight?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Upcoming agenda items, uh, who wants to handle that?
Um, I will. Um, basically we just have, um, well, to the, after tonight. At the next meeting, we will have the um, one thirty-four Wednesday, the public hearing for that. Going to have, I guess, uh, I'll defer to Nick if he's heard anything, but as of right now, we just have that facade renovation on um, North Wilcox.
What is that? I, I can't place that.
Yeah, so that's the old lead transmission shop next to it. Yeah, we were blighting them and the guy bought it and he's going to dump a million dollars.
Does he own the parking lot next to that building as well?
He does not. That is the uh, Eagles. And then he owns zero parking on the entire site. We actually, the city owns the four spaces upon this building. They, they look like they're his. So really goofy, but. I'm going to bring him for a photography.
Okay, any other uh, business for the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, we would expect to have that traffic study there at the latest, at the July meeting, maybe even blank. Maybe a special meeting if you want to get that going, but. We got.
I don't know if the commission wants to consider. So normally, you know, as of two years ago, we've taken with planning commission. We've taken the months of June, July and August. Um, I guess basically off from a second meeting. I don't know if there would be any interest uh, in having a special meeting. Um, the two topics that potentially I think that Nick and I, you know, we bring back the infill item. And then bring forward for the commission, the uh, uh, our recommendation with the traffic uh, study.
Commissioners.
Well, question, are we, is there any plan uh, to come back for live meetings? Anytime soon? Is there any change regarding our ability to do that?
Not during the month of June.
Yeah, nothing, nothing imminent uh, about having meetings in person. Right now, right now, we're indefinitely going to have um, Zoom meetings.
Because these, these Zoom meetings provide a little more flexibility, at least for me anyway. So.
Yeah, maybe.
Helps to move things along. I'm okay with the second meeting.
That's, we'll keep them virtual for good. That's part of my emergency power.
So we want to, do we want to continue and have two meetings or no? Only talking about? Well, July and August?
Yes, keep the two meetings. Keep moving.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah, we, you know, and we can, if we have the second meeting, it doesn't have to be as long, probably.
Yeah. Obviously, if anyone's going on vacation or whatever, I mean, you get your chance to get out of here after this experience. And uh, frankly, you could do this from your cottage up north if you had to.
Right.
How about June fifteenth, seven PM?
Is that a Thursday?
No, no, uh, that was the Monday.
Okay.
If you want to keep with the theme, we could just do the eighteenth if you want.
Or the eighteenth would be the keeping with the same on the Thursday.
The same day.
Yeah.
Thursday better? That's our, that's our uh, program typically, isn't it? Let's go with that.
Okay.
Okay. June eighteenth it is, okay?
Can I, can I ask one thing, Mr. Chairman? Uh, Sienna, can you send out the link like the week of?
Normally it is because of Memorial Day and the adjustments. And then I had to wait for council meeting to occur. I sent it out later. So normally I do it one week prior to the meeting.
Well, no, I meant do it like a couple of days before the meeting.
A reminder.
So, no, so we're not like constantly looking back at, looking for.
We have from two weeks ago.
Yeah. That's what I meant.
It was in today's uh, email, wasn't it, that you sent about uh, Jeffrey not being here?
Yes.
That helped. That was really good.
But the other one, but if he hadn't sent that email, you would have.
But doesn't it, doesn't it go?
Isn't it in the calendar invite?
It should go to your calendar if you accept it.
You accept it, it'll go to your calendar.
On your calendar, you can always just check your calendar every day. I, I, I had to figure that out. I'm not a, I'm not.
Should have done that then, okay?
No problem, Stuart. I'll cater to you. No worries.
No, no, that's okay. I'll try to figure that out.
Okay. Sarah, again, welcome to the commission and uh, we look forward to having you with your input and history here in Rochester. On uh, these many projects. I hope you found this interesting tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We hope you come back, right?
Yeah, don't run away.
I'll see you on the eighteen.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there's an objection, uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, Tess. Good job.
Thanks.